Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Burke, President of the Twelton Valley Water District Board of Commissioners. It is about 7:06, and I declare this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. Commissioners present are Dick Schmidt, Bernice Bagnell, myself, Richard Burke, and Jim Duggan. Jim Doane is not present tonight. I would also like to recognize Marilyn McWilliams, who is in the audience tonight, former Commissioner and friend, and I want to thank her for coming tonight, and a former General Manager of TVWD. Jesse was here, and he paid a visit, and so pleasant evening to everyone. So we'll begin, yes? Oh, Todd Sanders. Okay, very good. Excellent. I didn't, I don't have my glasses on, so I wasn't able to recognize you here. So, thank you very much for coming tonight. So we'll begin with reports by the Chief Executive Officer and management staff.
Good evening, President Burke, members of the board. We will kick it off the way we always do with Safety Minute, and the Safety Minute this evening will be presented by Paul Matthews, our Chief Financial Officer. Paul?
Thank you, Mark. President Burke, Commissioners, as we head towards the Fourth of July, I thought it would be worthwhile to put together a Safety Moment on fireworks safety. So I have the following video to-
In 2014, fireworks-related injuries led to an estimated 10,500 emergency room visits and 11 deaths. During peak activity, burns accounted for 54% of injuries. First-degree burns cause pain and redness. Second-degree burns cause the same, as well as swelling and blistering. Third-degree burns are the most serious, causing charred skin that may go numb. To treat a first-degree burn or a second-degree burn smaller than three inches in diameter, soothe the pain with cold water and then apply petroleum jelly or Alavira. Larger second-degree burns, plus those affecting sensitive areas, and all third-degree burns require medical attention from a doctor or nurse. To avoid a trip to the hospital, take the proper precautions. When lighting a firework, never place any part of your body over the fuse. After it's lit, immediately retreat to a safe distance. Never try to relight or pick up fireworks that failed to light properly. Make sure an adult always supervises fireworks activities. In case of fire, always keep a bucket of water or a hose nearby. Fireworks are dangerous, but they don't have to send you to the emergency room. Act smart and avoid injuries.
So with that, a couple of things. First of all, water, if you do get burned, can it help soothe the pain? And keep a bucket or hose with you as you light off your fireworks. With that, I hope everybody has a happy and safe Fourth of July, and that concludes the Safety Moment.
Just a real quick story about that. When we lived in Bend, the Bend Fire Department was setting off the Fourth of July fireworks on Paul Butte, and a four-inch motor failed to go, and a fireman stuck his arm down in there, and it went.
Oh, no. I remember, growing up in Nebraska, we had cherry bombs, M-80s, bottle rockets. Used to, like, make spaceships out of cardboard and put, like, a dozen of them in there and tie their fuses together, you know? I could have used the Safety Moment, you know, 30 years ago. Thank you very much.
Now you know why we do that.
Now you know why we do that.
Take all the fun out of the Fourth of July. So, a few brief updates this evening. In light of all of the activity in the city of Salem, I thought I'd talk mostly this evening about cyanotoxins. Again, that is the contaminant that was responsible for the "do not drink" notice in the city of Salem. The district recently completed the first round of biweekly monitoring for cyanotoxins at the point where water comes into our supply system, so these are the points of delivery from the Portland Supply and from the Joint Water Commission's supply. And I'm pleased to report that cyanotoxins were not detected in either the Portland or JWC supplies to the district. Testing will continue through September of this year as part of the Environmental Protection Agency's Unregulated Contaminants Monitoring Rule, otherwise known as UCMR-IV. The district also continues to loan the city of Salem an emergency water distribution trailer and the related equipment. This loan is being made available to Salem through a mutual aid agreement that's made possible through the Oregon Water and Wastewater Agency Response Network, otherwise known as ORWON, and that's possible because both the city of Salem and TVWD are members of ORWON. We intend to continue to make the equipment available to Salem as long as they need it and as long as we don't need it. So, if we need it back, we will obviously ask for it back, and Salem understands that they will have to return it. Also, kind of more on the regulatory front, Joel Carey, who you know, TVWD's Water Resources' Manager, joined the water, other water providers at a meeting with elected officials in Salem last week to discuss the proposed rulemaking for monitoring of cyanotoxins in Oregon. The water proposed, water providers proposed to the state legislators that the state invest in an Oregon-based laboratory to process cyanotoxins. One of the big problems that water providers have been experiencing is the long delay time associated with the laboratory work that's necessary. So, we think there's an opportunity to essentially accelerate that for Oregon water providers by having an Oregon-based lab that can do this kind of testing, but that requires money. We also want to set up a clear set of protocols and methods for issuing alerts. One of the big challenges Salem had, as we know, was confusing information and how they notified the public and when they notified the public. And then to address the issue of equity of emergency water distribution during times of crisis, there really needs to be a clear and consistent way to make water available to the public that provides fairness to all members of the community. The elected officials, I'm told, were very impressed. I hope that's not me. And they're now thinking about those issues and how to move forward with those ideas. Finally, Joel is actively involved in a work group that's responsible for providing comments on the draft cyanotoxin rule that the state health authority has developed, and in fact, just today I saw a set of comments going back to the state and the opportunity to significantly improve the draft rule the state has issued. So that's the news on cyanotoxins. A couple of schedule reminders. The Washington County Vision Action Network, otherwise known as VAN, is going to have its annual celebration next Monday evening, June 25th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. out at PCC Rockwood. Again, I think a couple of you have indicated willingness to attend.
Yes, sir. Where at at PCC?
I can't tell you off the top of my head, but we will get you that information. Do you know Commissioner Duggan?
I think it's called Building 7 or their meeting place. That's where it was last year.
Oh, Building 7, okay.
Yeah, usually they have signs directing people to the event, and the parking would be in the back. Drive in off of Springville Road and continue, not turning right or left, but continue on the same, same street toward, toward the back.
Okay, thank you.
We'll follow up with an email to the board members and provide that information. And then, also a reminder, the TVWD Board Retreat is going to be Monday, July 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. until 2:30 p.m. at the Supply Program Management Office, the PMO. And again, we'll get, make sure that the board has the information on how to get there, although I think several of you have been to the PMO already. And with that, we'll move into the department report, and again, Paul Matthews, the CFO, will provide the department report this evening in keeping with the district's mission of providing quality water and customer service. Take it away, Paul.
Thank you, Mark. President Burke, Commissioners, I wanted to follow up with a conversation that we had at the last workstation, work session, rather, where we talked about the district's revenue bond program. I talked a little bit about WIFIA, and would give you an update on, on where we are with WIFIA and what's happening. So tonight, I want to define a little bit clearer what WIFIA is, give you some background on WIFIA itself. It's an acronym that's easy to pronounce, but a little bit more difficult to describe, so it'll take some time to go through that. I want to talk about how our customers would benefit if we were to take on a WIFIA loan and what we would need to do to get access to WIFIA money and the next steps. So based on what I said, obviously, WIFIA is about money. It's the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act of 2014. It is a pilot program that has been in place now for, active for two years. The first year of WIFIA was last year, we're in the second year of the pilot program. The first loans for WIFIA actually closed on April the 11th, and that was for King County, Washington, their wastewater utility up there. I understand that the second loan is closing imminently. It could have closed within last week or will within the next week or so. One of the key features of WIFIA, it's a loan program where we borrow money from the U.S. Treasury. The interest rate is locked in at the time that we would close on the loan. So if we were to borrow money for the water supply program and we close on the loan, the interest rate becomes locked at that point, which is advantageous. We also would have up to 35 years after what they call the substantial completion of the project to start repaying the loan. And in fact, we can actually go through a process of delaying some of the payments even a little bit further. But it is a competitive selection process. A lot of utilities will be applying for the loan program, and there's a limited amount of capacity for those loans, so I'll talk about that as well. So, in 2017, it all starts with what they describe as a NOFA, or a Notice of Funding Availability. And for 2007, there were 43 utilities, this is a little difficult to see with the projector that we have here tonight, 43 different projects were submitted for WIFIA funding, and of that, 12 were selected. So you couldn't see what it said on the other slide, but it was about $6 billion worth of requests and $2.3 billion worth of funding. Now, the way the WIFIA program works is that the, you're able to borrow up to 49% of the project's cost using that Treasury rate, that 30-year Treasury, comparable Treasury rate. The other 51%, you can use either tax-exempt debt or cash to fund that. So, WIFIA average, actually leverages the investment, basically doubles. So, $2.3 billion worth of WIFIA funding then doubles the amount of, of actual infrastructure investment. That's the reason that Congress has authorized WIFIA, and that's the purpose of the pilot project. It is a competitive process, as you can see. It went from 43 projects down to, to a dozen. This year, they've published the criteria and the scoring points. They are here for, for your information, but essentially it comes down to three major categories. First is the project impact. There are 100 points scored on the project impact. Project readiness, that's the ability of a project to be done, so-called maybe shovel-ready kind of a thing, 100 points for that. And the third one is the creditworthiness of the borrower. There's a little bit of a tension within WIFIA. The stated purpose of WIFIA is to innovate, to spur on investment, and to make marginal projects feasible. Well, on the one hand, we have to have projects that are technically feasible and ready to proceed. Those aren't really the marginal projects, so we're kind of in a situation where we want to present all sides of the water supply program to make it more, to make the chance of getting WIFIA borrowing a little bit better. In addition, EPA has some priorities, and that counts for about, I think about 30 points. The priorities for 2018, which are published with the Notice of Funding Availability, first is repair rehabilitation and replacement of aging infrastructure and conveyance systems, and the second one is to provide for clean and safe drinking water, especially reducing exposure of lead in the nation's drinking water, ensuring continuous compliance with contaminations, contamination limits, responding quickly to emerging concerns, improving the nation's aging and insufficient drinking water infrastructure. Our program doesn't fit completely in there. Certainly, we're ready to go, but maybe we don't line up as well for the current priorities that the EPA has. So it will be a competitive process. I want to describe the benefits to WIFIA and why we're very interested in this. First, on the interest rate risk. One of the risks that we have in our financial forecast, our financial plan, is that interest rates go up over time. We know interest rates are going up. That's the stated policy of the Fed, is to increase interest rates, and that is going to continue. One of the benefits of WIFIA is the interest rate is fixed at the time of closing. Now, that doesn't mean you have to start taking the money at that time, it's just the interest rate is fixed at that time, and you can draw down the money as you need. And in fact, you can actually use short-term borrowing at very low rates and refund that when you're ready to close out the project at completion. So effectively, it's a free hedge if interest rates do increase, and if interest rates were to go down, we wouldn't have to exercise the option within the WIFIA. Lower interest rates, it's based on the U.S. Treasury rate with a comparable term. For those of us that looked at public finance in the 80s and 90s, oftentimes municipal debt was priced cheaper than U.S. Treasuries, but with the general compression of interest rates now and with the certain tax reforms that have occurred, the beneficial rates, the effect of that tax exempt has actually lowered, and the spread is negative, what we would call negative arbitrage. So right now, interest rates in the Treasury is actually lower than what we would otherwise borrow. Also, WIFIA offers the flexibility to sculpt the repayment if desired, which may not be a big deal to the district right now, probably a bigger deal to our partner, the city of Hillsborough, but you're able to smooth out your debt service by wrapping the debt around existing bonds that might be paid off in the future, or build up over time your debt service payments. You have the flexibility of drawing funds when you need them. You can use short-term financing when short-term interest rates are lower, and that avoids what we call the negative arbitrage, where if we were to go out in the traditional bond market and borrow $100 million, we have to find a place to invest that. We may be paying 4% on the money and earning 2% on it with our investments. That negative arbitrage would cost us a lot of money. This avoids that. And the flexibility, though, repayment terms, first of all, 35 years after substantial completion. We anticipate the substantial completion of the program will be at 2026. So 35 years past 2026, as opposed to 25 to 30 years from the point that you borrow the money. So we have a longer repayment period, which allows us to smooth out the rate increases over time. And the last thing I have on the list here is the ability to capitalize interest for up to five years, which means that we can delay repaying the principal, we can actually have the interest capitalize as part of the loan over time. So it's very beneficial to TVWD's customers. The process of going through this competitive process, it starts with a project selection process, there's actually a project approval process, and then closing. With a project selection, process, we would submit a letter of interest. That will be due July 31st, so we're busy working on that. It is evaluated by the EPA staff and some senior managers at the EPA. They'll evaluate all of those. Last year, 43. I anticipate this year, they will have more than that. And once they've gone through their evaluation, they will select those projects that they deem worthy of, of applying for the WIFIA. Once you get to that stage, basically, you're going to get funding unless there's a fatal flaw in what you're doing. They intend to fund all those programs, and they have the appropriations to cover that. So that's really where we want to get. Project approval, that's where you go through the application process. You have to dot a lot of i's, cross a lot of t's, and we get to closing. That's where you negotiate those terms, like sculpting the debt and so forth, and then you execute the credit agreement, which is, seals the deal for you. So if we look at the, the short-term schedule, the Notice of Funding Availability was issued on April 12th. The letter of interest is due July 31st. It was actually due, I think, July 9th, and they extended it to the 31st. The letter of interest will be evaluated by EPA staff for about three to four months, and so we would know in the fall of 2018 if we were selected to proceed to submit an application for WIFIA. We need to be competitive in order to have a chance to get WIFIA funding. It is a very competitive environment out there, and in fact, the city of Portland is also pursuing WIFIA money for their treatment plan. This is a team effort. We're working closely with our partners at the city of Hillsborough. The project will be funded, so together, we need to pursue that. One letter of interest will be submitted, and we'll both be talking about our financial capability to repay the debt. We're working closely with Water Supply Program staff, with Dave's team, to be able to get this work done in time. And in fact, we've added experts from our program management firm to come in and help us do this work in very short order. So it's really a team effort and collaborative effort to get this work done. Our next steps, the team will continue to prepare the letter of interest. We will submit it by July 31st. We will consult with our financial advisors, both for the city of Hillsborough as well as TVWD, to make sure that our submittal is consistent with our long-term financing needs, as well as with our bond counsel, and we'll continue to maintain our long-term financial plan and work with the investment banking community, because we'll need to fund the other 51% with a mix of cash and traditional financing, and of course, this is very competitive, so we need to have a plan if we don't get WIFIA funding to continue on with the program. So with that, any questions that you might have? Oh, yes, Commissioner Beck?
I have one. If I, did I understand you correctly to say that selection is really based just on this letter of interest? And if that is the case, do you, do they have, like, a waitlist in case someone drops out when they submit the fuller application and maybe don't, are not able to comply with everything that needs to be done to make the project really viable?
They didn't last year, and they don't have a mechanism to do that this year, as far as we know. A couple of things about that. That's what makes the letter of interest a heavy lift. They need to have sufficient, we need to provide them enough information in that letter of interest that they can evaluate all those items I talked about, the readiness of the program, proceed, the technical feasibility, things around the permit, whether or not our public involvement's up to the snuff, as well as our financial capacity to repay the debt. So, it's not just small letters that say, hey, we want to check this out. There's a lot of information that gets submitted, so they can do that evaluation.
The, the letter of interest looks a lot more like an application than it does a letter of interest. If there are no other questions, that concludes the, the management staff report this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. The next part of the agenda is Commissioner Communications, reports of meetings attended and topics to be raised by Commissioners, and I'll break tradition and start with myself. I have four meetings to report. The workshop, where we dealt with pending issues on the 5th of June. On the 7th, I met with our CEO and Commissioner Bagnell, where we went over the agenda for this meeting. I attended the American Water Works Association Conference from the 11th to the 15th, where all of us participated in activities that involved education and networking. And as for myself, a couple of things that I want to do, report, is, first of all, as is always the case, I learned a lot by simply walking the exhibition floor and taking a look at all of the new technologies that are out there, the technologies and pipes. This year, I saw an increase in SCADA systems that were on display and a lot of automation, a lot of new ways to detect leaks, and a lot of those things. And I think the value that Commissioners have of, of looking at those exhibition floors is to, unless you're an engineer, it at least gives you some background on what's out there, so you can kind of have at least a basic understanding of, of some of the infrastructure that's there. But what really knocked my socks off was a presentation that I attended, put on by a woman named Jillie Elkin, who is a general partner of the Israeli Colorado Innovation Fund. And what she did was talk about some of the water conservation technologies that have been developed in Israel. We've probably heard of it. I didn't realize that drip irrigation was invented in Israel, and that has allowed Israel to have high yields of crops with minimal use of water. Also, I didn't realize this, but they collect about 90% of the water that they use, and of the water that they collect, they're able to actually recondition and reuse 86% of that water. Those technologies are amazing. They've also made great strides in making desalinization plants less expensive, less expensive to operate, and also more environmentally friendly, because you always have to do something with the salt, I guess. But I thought immediately of some of the water conservation challenges we may have in the future here at TVWD, but also some of the water conservation challenges that already exist in places like Kalamath Falls, where agriculture is competing with fish and other things, and I've made contact with Ms. Elkin, and I'm going to try to get more information about that and share it with whoever cares, cares to listen. So that was a great conference. Also, got a chance to see old friends, make a few new friends, and buy a couple of drinks for a couple of Army guys that just got out of basic training, but it was just a really good time to, to relax and enjoy, enjoy these things and learn a little bit. And then, of course, tonight's meeting. So those are the reports of my meetings, and the reason why I decided to go first tonight is because I do have an announcement. On or about July 25th of, July 25th, I'm going to be changing my official residence to Lake Oswego, and Lake Oswego, of course, is out of the district. So I will be issuing a letter of resignation at the July 18th meeting of the Twelton Valley Water District Board of Commissioners. That will be effective as of that time. It's a difficult move for me, because I've, one of the highest honors of my life has been to be elected to this board and work with our ratepayers, and of course, the Commissioners that I've had the privilege of working with all of these years, and the world-class staff that, that we have had. I came on when Jesse Lowman was the General Manager, then Greg DiLoreto, and of course, Mark Nudson, and all of the people like, like Bernice and Paul and all of everyone here that have come on, and it's really been interesting to watch the evolution of this organization, which I think serves the public in a manner that government is supposed to serve the public, and people work together for common cause the way I think we're meant to serve in common cause. And I'll have more to say about this in my letter of resignation. I don't want to go on too long, but I wanted to make this announcement now so that the board and staff can lose no time in finding an appropriate replacement for me on the board. And so I guess with that, I'll start to my right with Commissioner Bagnell and loop around.
That's very hard to follow, and a little hard to swallow. But in terms of meetings attended, I did attend the June 5th Twelton Valley Work Session, where we had a CIS update from Andrew Carlstrom, and we also talked about the Pipeline East update, which is an agreement we're looking at again. Also, on the 5th, I had a meeting with the Finance Committee to get an additional background briefing on the PLE. On the 7th, I met with Mark Nudson and Richard Burke for agenda planning. Also, on the 7th, I had a Joint Water Commission Executive Committee meeting, where we discussed a project to replace the Wapato Pump. On the 11th through the 15th, I too went to the AWWA ACE Convention. I haven't been to one in eight years, and so it was very interesting to catch up, very interesting to see what's going on. Some things have changed quite a bit, and other things have not. I was also very, very pleased to get to spend time with Brenda Lennox and David LaFrance and reconnect with some of my, some of my good friends. And of course, tonight's meeting, the 20th, the regular board meeting.
I afford to attend. On the 22nd of May, I attended a Supply, Water Supply Committee meeting, where we discussed alternate pipeline alignments. And of course, 6:10 to 6:15, we were in Las Vegas for the American Water Works Association ACE 18 Convention. And on the 6th, oh, on the, on the 5th, I also attended the work session, which did CIS and pipeline updates, and tonight's regular board meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Duggan?
This past month, on the 17th of May, I met with Mark Nudson to talk about retreat planning and, and other updates. On the 24th of May, there was a Finance Committee meeting where I received an update on project scoping and planning. On the 5th, I attended the Board Work Session, where we learned the Customer Information System Project Agreement Strategy and update on the pipelines. On the 6th of June, I attended the Regional Water Providers Board Meeting, where we elected officers and reviewed a final draft of the strategic plan that will be going before the Board at its October meeting. And we also got news that the city of Troutdale and the city of Cornelius will be joining the consortium effective this next year. We received updates on, on the conservation and emergency management programs. In particular, in the staff update, Mark Nudson mentioned about our water distribution emergency kit and system being loaned to the city of Salem. As it so happens- As it so happens, the Portland metropolitan area is 32nd of 32 cities that qualify for getting federal grants for homeland security initiatives and preparing for emergencies and possibly terrorism. So we're, the Portland metro area just made the cut, and when we get that grant money for the consortium, it's likely that we'll get an eighth or ninth emergency water distribution kit. So we'll be again making steps to be prepared for that day when the eventual Cascadia subduction zone earthquake hits. Or some other event similar to what Salem has, has experienced over, over the last year, or, or any number of, of possible scenarios that it's better to prepare for than to be found inadequately prepared. At, yeah, that, that's pretty much it for the Regional Water Providers Consortium Board Meeting, other than we did get a, a presentation on the upcoming forecast, seasonal forecast. And the one good news that I had to report from that is that Twalton Basin is one of the few in the area that is experiencing above-average flows. It's kind of different than the other basins where we had an unusual dry May and, and unusual dry June. The Twalton is, and Hag Lake are, are in better shape than, than others in the area. It's not like there's going to be a drought declaration soon, but if, if supplies get low as we go into the summer season and fall season, it looks like the Twalton Basin is in better shape than others. I also attended the American Waterworks Association Annual Conference and got a lot of good information, attended a lot of great trainings, and then we have tonight's board meeting.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. One-
President Burke, if I could-
Yes, please.
-a couple of things. I don't mean to interrupt, but there's a couple of important issues I want to call your attention to. And one is, first of all, Commissioner Duggan is being modest in his reflection on the Regional Water Providers Consortium Board Meeting, since he was also reelected to serve on the Executive Committee for the, and so I think it speaks highly to the regional leadership that the district provides through Commissioner Duggan. So thank you very much for being willing to do that.
Why didn't you tell us that?
I modeled humility, just like our esteemed executive officer over there.
And, and secondly, considering your announcement in terms of your impending resignation, there are a couple of actions we need to take in anticipation of that. And so the, the staff has taken the liberty to prepare a schedule, and I don't know if you're prepared to discuss that or how you want to proceed on that matter.
I'm okay to discuss that. I understand, and the next step I was going to take would be the establishment of an evaluation committee.
Exactly right.
And so that is, after the, we just finished the Commissioner Communications, and so at that, at this point, I would like to establish a, an evaluation committee to consider appointing a replacement for me when I step off the board. And my understanding is that Commissioner Bagnell and Commissioner Duggan have expressed an interest in being on that evaluation committee. Is that, is that correct? I'll entertain a motion to make those appointments.
I so moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Can I second?
Sure, sure can.
He's on it.
So I don't think I can as chair, but it's fine, okay. Commissioner Bagnell seconds. All those in favor, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes for zero. Staff has also prepared a work plan to fill the vacancy that includes a proposed schedule. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the schedule as developed by staff? Would anyone like to discuss that schedule? Or would you like to, we have it in front of us, we can just approve it, or if you want to discuss it, we can discuss it?
I guess I would like to note that it is a very compressed schedule, and we're hoping to fill the vacancy as quickly as possible, obviously. But we have also spoken with the CEO and assured him, as a board, as I recall, that if we need to take longer, we will take longer.
And, and, and this is the first pass at the schedule. Obviously, if we get no applicants or the evaluation committee is not satisfied with the applicants, we can continue to extend this until the position is filled.
Yeah. And so people who might be watching understand that whoever is appointed would have to stand for reelection next year. They're only finishing my term. They're not, they're not going to get a fresh four-year term. So is there additional discussion about the vacancy schedule? Okay, entertain a motion to adopt the proposed schedule, subject to the fact that it may have to be altered if circumstances warrant.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Those opposed, nay. It is adopted. Okay. This is normally the time when we would entertain public comment, but I don't think anyone here has filled out a comment sheet, so I don't think we have any public comment tonight. So the next item would be the Consent Agenda, and these are items considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion, although board members may pull out items on the consent agenda for individual discussion and evaluation. The two items on the consent agenda tonight are the May 16th, 2018 Regular Meeting Minutes and the June 5th, 2018 Work Session Minutes. Is there a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Schmidt moves.
And I'll second.
Commissioner Bagnell seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Consent Agenda is adopted. This brings us to the Business Agenda, and the first item on the Business Agenda is to consider adopting Resolution Number 19-18, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between Clean Water Services and the Twalton Valley Water District for Customer Information System Project Professional Services.
So as you know, we are a regional billing provider, billing services provider for water and wastewater services, and we do that through ongoing partnership with Clean Water Services. We're also, as you know, in the process of evaluating and moving forward with the replacement of that billing system, our customer information system. And so this evening, Andrew is going to tell us about a new partnership that's been proposed to enter into an agreement with Clean Water Services for that continued planning and replacement of the customer information system. Did I steal your entire presentation?
Yeah.
Yeah. Andrew.
Thank you.
Now, I'm told that tonight you're going to be giving us your presentation in iambic pentameter. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, very good.
So before I continue, I'll just remind you the purpose of this project. We're replacing the legacy utility billing system with a commercial off-the-shelf system. I'll show this every time we have an update, just, I think it's important to focus on the objective. Importantly, this is a collaborative project between Clean Water Services and TVWD, and just as important is, we'll be focusing the implementation on configuration, not customization. You've seen some of this information before. Wanted to give it to you a little more graphically, the three phases, the agreements and the professional services. So again, we have three phases of this project. We'll have an agreement in each phase, and in each phase also has professional services that we'll rely on for the, for the project. So the first phase takes us from where we are today, and that's really initiating the project through the intergovernmental agreement. And so the, the agreement would be the initial project IGA. And the professional services for this phase, number one, project management, the meter-to-cash audit that we've discussed before, developing the requirements for the new system, developing the RFP for the new system, selecting, contract negotiation. And the, the cost estimate for this phase is $250,000, and that will be shared equally between TVWD and Clean Water Services. The second phase is the implementation phase, and we expect to select a vendor, but then have a contract in place the summer of 2019. The agreement for the second phase will be amending the initial IGA in front of you tonight, and then the professional services will be more project management and potentially some implementation, implementation services, depending on the vendor that we select. And finally, the third phase is the ongoing operations and continuous improvement under the new CIS. We expect the go-live to be early calendar year 2021. The agreement will be a new operations agreement with Clean Water Services, and then the project management will cover just a few months into Phase Three for what is called the stabilization period after go-live. So a few key elements of the agreement, you've seen some of these before. First off, it establishes the partnership between the district and Clean Water Services for the, this initiative. It'll be, again, collaborative. There'll be, both agencies will be actively involved in decision-making. Again, the district will be the managing agency of the project and the new CIS after cutover. The agreement also establishes the three project phases. One difference from the agreement in front of you versus what we talked about at the Work Session is this agreement focuses primarily on Phase One, with the exception of authorizing project management for the whole project. Again, this authorizes project professional services, the meter-to-cash audit through selection and contract negotiations, project management for the duration of projects, of the entire project. But in terms of cost sharing, again, that $250,000 is just for Phase One, but not including project management for Phase Two or Phase Three.
And it does not establish cost sharing for Phase Two and Phase Three?
That is correct. That is correct.
Just wanted to be sure.
Yes. So next steps for the project, authorization of the IGA. We'd like you to consider this IGA. If you approve, it'll go to the Washington County Board of Commissioners next Tuesday. If both the boards approve, both agencies will execute the IGA. TVWD will then publish the RFP for professional services. TVWD and Clean Water Services will then select the firm, and then the project will start the meter-to-cash audit. And again, we'll be giving you updates at every step of the project.
Okay, are there any questions?
Just for clarification, for someone who may not know the local jargon, what is cash to meter, meter to cash?
So the meter-to-cash cycle covers everything from meter reading to credit collections, billing, payments, everything in between.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a bucket for a, a large family of processes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. And with that, I will entertain a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 19-18, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between Clean Water Services and Twalton Valley Water District for Customer Information System Project Professional Services.
I so moved.
Okay. Commissioner Schmidt moves.
And I second.
Commissioner Bagnell seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Resolution Number 19-18 passes for zero. Next item of business, consider endorsing an updated PLE 1.0 pipeline alignment from the Willamette Water Supply System to the district.
So I believe this is probably the third time that each of you have heard an updated permutation of this presentation, both through the Finance and Supply Committee as well as the Work Session presentation. So I won't go into the details, and Carrie and Paul will, will cover the material adequately. But, but I would only say that the reason this is the third time you've heard this is because, A, it's first of all, a fairly complicated subject, B, it's a very important subject in terms of both water service delivery, but also in terms of the finances of the district. And what we were really looking for more than anything else was to find a way to optimize both the timing and scope of a project that would actually take water through, Willamette Water through the entire district service area. So with that, take it away, Carrie Pack and Paul Matthews.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Commissioner Burke and Commissioners. So it is true that this is the third time you've heard about this project and this presentation, and-
It's all right. It gets better and better.
I was just going to say, we hope that each time you hear, it's a little bit better and a little bit more entertaining and a little bit more comprehensive. So here we go. What, what we're going to talk about today is Pipeline East Alternative Alignment Evaluation that we have embarked on. I'm going to do a quick background of the project, as well as provide you some, a few drivers for why we started this reevaluation process, options that we reviewed, and then end with alignment recommendations that, that we'd like for you to consider and endorse this, this evening. And Paul's going to be taking over towards the, about two-thirds of the way, and I'll finish up. Just as a quick reminder, back in 2016, HDR completed the recommended preferred route for the Willamette Water Supply Program. And the eastern extension alignment associated with that preferred alignment or preferred route started along Kennaman Road, and it, it started from 209th, and it followed pretty much the Kennaman Road right away, and it went up to joining the, our current system in Walker Road area through Central Beaverton area. And this project was partially picked, or this route was partially selected because the Kennaman Road itself at the time was viewed as, or it was on the block or candidate for county road extension project. And as we were moving forward with getting the program running, up and running, we recognized that first there was change that needed to be made for the, all the route selection in terms of the Central Beaverton area. To avoid some potential environmental issues, the program office did some work with, working with City of Beaverton to select a route that went up through southwest Milliken Avenue or Road. As the project was being, as we were submitting the permit applications for the programmatic permit to Army Corps of Engineers, we were notified that the Kennaman Road was no longer part of the mistip project that they had intended for. So that got us thinking that maybe we needed to, this was an opportunity to look, relook at the alignment for this particular pipeline. Water Supply Program conducted a study, which ended up with alternative alignment following Farmington Road right away, also starting from 209th. And then the second half of that, right, the original alignment stayed the same direction, same route. And as we were doing this, our office at, at TVWD started looking at similar type of scenarios, and mainly because we wanted to take into consideration what Chief CEO Mark Nudson just mentioned, which is, are there opportunities to optimize the way we deliver water into this area? And we have been working with Corolla Engineering to come up with a potential rerouting of this pipeline to look at whether there was a different or better schedule for installing this set of, this pipeline. And we came to the board sometime, about a year ago, in the spring of last year, and through a work session, kind of showed you what we had gotten, and we had done enough work to, for you to allow us to move forward with additional studies to look at the potential alternatives in a deeper dive. Again, some of the drivers that we were looking at were to incorporate the services to water supply to the Metzger Service Area using the Pipeline East, and also look at what other in-district capra improvement needed to be accomplished in order for us to receive water that was being delivered through the Willamette River Water Supply Program. And possibly look at alternate schedules for when these pipelines needed to be completed, and to follow, consistent with board policy, looking at some of these different alternatives. And you might remember, one of the reasons we started looking at the alternate schedule is during the rate hearing last year, we had some customers that- is during the rate hearing last year, we had some customers that came to the open house, and there was some option, or some questions that were asked of us to possibly consider potentially delaying some of the projects. And we really took that, those comments to heart and wanted to make sure that we were doing our due diligence to make sure that we were doing what we needed to get done when the needs were necessary. All of the alternatives that I'm going to talk about here in a minute are providing same level of service to all of our customers, and so really bringing everything to the equal plane field. So, we hired, we started working with Brown and Caldwell, which is an engineering firm, and asked them to look at five different alternative alignments. And as any good engineer, when you ask them for five, they started with eight. And all of the eight alignments that I'm going to talk about, we looked at the non-economic evaluation criteria that are listed on the board there. So, the first alignment that we looked at was the baseline condition. So, this is the program's current budgeting process, where, again, this is the original preferred route from 2016 study, where we followed the Kennaman right-of-way and up through Milliken to get to the current transmission line in Walker. Along with that, the red line that you see there is the Metzger line. So, we would have a line that provides services to the Wolf Creek area as well as the Metzger line. Alternative 1B is a slight alteration from what you see from baseline. This is the, the alternative 1B that was selected going up through Farmington, and again, going up to City of Beaverton, through City of Beaverton in, using the Milliken Road, Milliken Avenue. I think that's, I don't know whether it's avenue or road. So, with the, you see the, the orange dotted line, so this is, this line would also be accompanied with Metzger line. Alternative 1C is slight variation from alternative 1B. We start from 209th and Farmington, and we go up 170th and connect to TVWD's system just to the west of what you had seen before. And again, comment to these, set of alternatives is the line to Metzger. Alternative 1D is slight variation of what we have been seeing, and that is following the Kennaman Road right-of-way and then going up to 170th and connecting to TVWD's system along with the Metzger Road or Metzger System. Alternative 2A tries to utilize the, the Metzger System pipeline. So, what you see there is the black line along with, with the small connection to Metzger System. And so, we would start from Roy Rogers and Shoals Ferry and go up to the east, all the way up to Allen, and then western, and connect to the Beaverton Hillsdale Highway. You'll notice that we don't have an extra different set of pipes solely dedicated to Metzger at this point, with these sets of alternatives. So, alternative 2B, similar to 2A, except instead of going up Allen and western, we go up through the old Shoals Ferry right-of-way. And alternative 4 was somewhat of a unique concept. In this alternative, we would actually be using the existing Washington County pipeline, supply line coming from City of Portland. This alternative includes building a, we would basically reverse the flow that pipeline is, that we use right now, by delivering the water from Willamette Supply to our system. In order for us to do that, we would have to build a smaller line that would be dedicated to City of Towleton, which also gets the water from this pipeline. So, those are the eight different alignments that we looked at, and again, using the evaluation criteria that you see on the board, which was also used by the program office, we completed evaluation for these non-economic evaluation criteria, as well as looking at a very preliminary cost based on per linear foot of cost for each of these alternatives. And what you'll note is significant cost difference between the Wolf Creek and the other Metzger column. Predominantly, the cost reduction is due to pipe not being, set of pipe, a segment of pipe being not needed for the alternative 2, ones on the right side, as well as the alternatives that are on the, that uses the Shoals Ferry alignment, we wouldn't need to build additional fluoride station, because we would be utilizing the one that we already have in our system. So, those are primarily two reasons why they stand up as being such smaller or less cost of the two. This is just a quick overview of all of the different alternatives that we looked at in terms of, for non-economic criteria, whether it was, the little dashes are negative, zeros are neutral, and pluses are positive for each of these different areas. And the, there is a final draft tech memo that's been added to your agenda packet that's 100-plus documents, pages of document that goes over how all of these criteria were reviewed and they came to be. So, this is where we started creating the fourth dimension, as Paul will talk about here in a little bit. Having, from the eight different alternatives, alternatives, we ended up with 1C plus Metzger pipe and 2A as being the two that we wanted to move forward in terms of, you know, how do we make the final decision to bring in the financial and the, financial aspects of the project or evaluation? And as we were doing that, we wanted to identify different aspects of things that would have to happen as the timing changes. So, for example, if we were to build the alternatives 1A and 2A, 1C and 2A by 2036, we would continue, we would have to continue to use Portland water in fiscal, by fiscal year 2026, as well as, one of the things that we recognized for alternative 1C, we would actually build portion of the pipeline that would go, would be included in, under 170th, because they're, Washington County has a roadway project improvement scheduled for that section within the next couple of years. And then in, by 2036, we would build the rest of the remaining Pipeline East extension. So, again, if, the last bullet there, the alternative 2A hybrid by 2036, is a scenario where, again, we ended up with two alternatives, and then somehow we ended up with six different financial scenarios to look at, and you'll see here in a minute what I mean by that. But the hybrid option was, someone had an idea of maybe building just the Metzger portion for the Shoals Ferry route, and then by 2026, and building out the rest of it by 2036. So, with all of these different ideas, we looked at, what are the comparable present value for, you know, when you look at the, not only the capital cost but also the operations and maintenance costs associated with these different alternatives, as well as different timing for construction? So, with that, Paul started doing his financial evaluation of these different scenarios and timing.
Thank you, Carrie. So, now, we're going to transition to what we call the fourth dimension. We've been trying to move the capital expenditures out past 2026, 2027, out to 28, 9, or to 2030 to smooth out our rate projections. So, we've been working hard to find options to do that. This analysis was part of that. We look at these projects as our way to delay them by buying additional water from Portland to provide for a portion of the water in either the Wolf Creek area and the Metzger area, and delay that pipeline investment. As we looked at that, the opportunity of phasing, delaying some of those capital improvements, and we looked at the engineering details, we realized that what actually requires is to accelerate some improvements in the southwest portion of our service area. So, we were intending to do this to delay capital improvements, and that was true in one area, but it causes us to accelerate improvements in another area. So, we evaluated the scenarios that we have here, and we looked at both the rate impacts, which is, of course, very important, as well as the financial performance. As we step through this, the rate impacts are those that we've discussed in the past, looking at the impact on that typical single-family residential customer that we use with 7ccf of water per month. For the financial performance, we're very interested, of course, on how it's going to affect one of the key ratios that we use to measure our performance, which is the debt service coverage ratio, as well as the financial reserves that we have and the outstanding debt. So, as we look at completing the project by 2026, a couple of things that occur. First, our blue area that you see here, this is our capital expenditure for those facilities being built by the program, for the WWSS program. The gray area is the in-district CIP. So, if we complete the program, complete the PLE by 2026, we actually have additional expenditure during this period of time that is blue, but we've delayed some of the improvements, the gray improvements, out here to 2041. So, by completing the PLE alignment early, we actually delay a fair amount of our piping projects in southwest part of our area. By contrast, if we delay PLE to 2036, you'll see that quite a bit of the blue area moved out here, from here out to this area, recognizing that we've delayed the construction of that Pipeline East. But you'll see that we've moved into this timeframe, the capital improvements that we need in the southwest part of our service area. So, that was, and engineering discoveries went through this. I didn't understand it initially, but it did come to bear on our recommendation that we have. So, where to come out? These are assumptions that, of course, are very rough at this time. As I spoke earlier about WIFIA and some of these other assumptions, these things can change quite a bit as we go forward. But what we've projected here are what the rates would look like with the 20, not working as well as it used to. The 2026 alignment is this light blue line at the top. If we delay it to 2036, it's this dash line here at the bottom. Those are actually quite close together, and it comes down to be somewhere between $5 to $7 difference on a monthly basis. Seventy-eight percent of the cost, if we look at it as a percent of the alternative. One of the key things to keep in mind when we look at these rate projections is it's not as if that money gets spent. Some of it gets put into the financial reserves. And so, if we accelerate the PLE alignment, the rates are higher in the near term, but this graph shows what will happen to our financial reserves. The blue bars that you see here are projections of our financial reserves in millions of dollars using the PLE immediately at 2026. The gray bars are for the 2036 alignment. The red bar is the minimum amount of reserves that we would want to maintain to meet our financial reserves for debt and other working capital needs. So, as you can see, out past 2030, we have a lot of financial flexibility that's generated from the 2026 scenario, and of course, that would help us fund some of the seismic improvements and take care of some of the aging infrastructure that we have in the district. That'll turn back to Carrie.
So, one of the other things that we didn't mention, but I'll note that here on this slide, is the potential for different sources, basically three different sources of water being mixed within, within the district if we were to wait until 2036, and the operators are not very well excited, very excited about that opportunity. So, tonight, the recommendation is, you know, based on the criteria that, that we have used to evaluate different alternatives, additional consideration that the, constructing the, this alignment by 2026, that includes giving us a complete loop system for the whole supply of water within the district, which results in reliability and also resiliency throughout our system, and, you know, the ability to have much more control over how we provide water around, within our district without Portland Water Bureau and Bull Run system, and giving us much less uncertainty or more certainty associated with costs that are pending with Portland system improvements that they're experiencing in the years, that they will be experiencing in the years to come with the filtration plant that they're working on right now, and also to provide more financial flexibility, as Paul just mentioned, as the projects get completed. We're recommending that, that the board endorse us to allow us to go ahead and move forward with completing additional studies that are going to be needed for amending our permit application following this alignment, as well as the design work that's going to be needed for us to complete this project by 2026. So, with that, I am open to any questions that you might have, and so is Paul.
Are there questions? You've seen the presentation a couple of times.
This being the third time through. No, no more questions.
I would like to say-
We got it.
I would like to say, though, that we've seen this presentation a few times, and speaking for myself, I think staff has made the correct recommendation here. But one thing that concerned me when I was looking at the options was that while staff, I think, looked at all of the factors of uncertainty which could befall us, if we went another 10 years, I was concerned about the unknown things that could face us. You know, right now, whether you love Donald Trump or you hate Donald Trump, there's all this talk about tariffs, how it's going to affect steel, and all these other things that we might need, we don't know. What's going to happen in five years? You know, if he gets re-elected or Bernie gets elected. Who, I mean, there's so many things that we don't know. It's like predicting the weather. The farther out you look, the less you know with any certainty what's going to happen. And with the size of the investment that the ratepayers are making with this new water source, I think we owe it to them to try and minimize those kinds of uncertainties, and a shorter project completion horizon, I think, does that. So, I applaud staff on the job that they've done to try and, and work with that, but also the larger wisdom that they're showing in trying to get this project completed faster. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
Well, I, I'd just like to echo your, your comments in that I really appreciate staff's thoughtful work on this and the detailed analysis to make the most reasonable choice among a lot of different options that have a lot of unknowns but a lot of pros and cons that had to be weighed. Therefore, I, if you're willing to entertain a motion that the board endorse the updated PLE Pipeline 1.0 alignment from the Willamette Water Supply System to the district as presented in tonight's meeting, and, and I, I believe that if there's new information that comes about, staff will evaluate it and move on with getting plans put in, in motion.
Very good. It's been moved that we endorse an updated PLE 1.0 pipeline alignment from the Willamette Water Supply System as, as described in the presentation we've just seen. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. It is endorsed, four-zero. And there being no further business before the Board of Commissioners, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Bye.